We'll go ahead and call our meeting over tonight. And we certainly want to thank everyone for coming, thank all of our guests for being here. We're gonna have our pledge release. And Brother Keith Fox is going to give our invocation. So as we do our pledge on ask.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever-ineparable.
Let's pray. Father God, as humble as I know how, I want to come into your presence this evening just to say thank you, Lord. I thank you, Father, for your love, your grace, and your mercy. I thank you, Father, for the privilege to be able to come into your presence. I want to thank you, Father, for this great city that you allow us to live in. I want to thank you for all the people who make her up. I thank you for the leaders that you have given to us. I pray, Father, that you bless them and you help them in their decision-making process and you always guide their every step. I want to thank you for our police force that you have provided for us. And I want to thank you for the great job that they do protecting and serving us. I thank you for each entity of this city and the makeup of it. And I pray, Father, that you will bless our city and that you will help us, Father, during this time that is so difficult for everyone. I thank you for the good leadership that we've had through all of this. Now, Father, as we go into this meeting this evening, I pray that everything that takes place here, that you'll be honored and glorified through it all. For it's in the precious name of Jesus, our Savior, that I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Brother Keith. As we get started on our agenda, the first thing on the agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Would there be a notice to approve those minutes? I'll make a motion. Okay. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? I'm in favor, CIA.
Uh-huh.
Thank you very much. Chief, if you would, I've got this second on the agenda, so I'll let you go ahead and talk about this. What we're proposing to do tonight with the council is an agreement. And I've sent them, I think they got a copy of everything that you have. And I sent last week. Explain the police proposal, someone will be able to give that to you. Unless you talk about what we'd like to do.
What I'd like to do on this is the goals were for four police vehicles, Chevy Tahos from Donna who Chevrolet, which is a state vehicle for that particular vehicle. One of the attractive reasons with Donna who is they accept trade-ins. They're willing to give you $10,000 per vehicle, trade-in on $40,000. Four cars for $40,000. The Tahos, as they sit, are $34,681.92 each. Total of $138,727.68. Okay, that $138,727.68, $40,000 trading, leaves a balance of $98,727.68. The equipment that decks these things out, having patrol ready, is $26,402. Now that is a combination of the four, that's not per vehicle. That's total amount for doing all four vehicles. Then you have the $98,727.26 and $3800 installation fee. Is a total of $28,929.68. For four complete vehicles that would cost, breaking them down, would be about $32,232. Making about two, little over $2,000 less than what they could be netting with our trainings. The lease agreements, the proposals are three different ones. The three-year lease is $38.93, 13 a month. The four-year is $29.98, 44 a month. Five-year is $24.62, 70 per month. What we thought would might fit better for our budget is a proposal for the 36-year plan, which would amount to $46,717.06 per year for the three years. At the end of that three years, we pay $1 in yardage.
$1?
$1 each.
What we had in our budget was built in enough to do two vehicles, which we built in $84,000 for our budget, because we had planned on trying to do two a year. And we could still do two a year, but I think this is a better option to get more at one time, not play, not pay us much each year. This would be $46,000, whatever, for three years to get four cars. And plus doing the trade-in, we know is each year those vehicles cars are getting less and less. Last year, I think we got $11,000 for the two.
$11,000 last year, $10,000 next year.
Each year $10,000, next year we'll be paying less.
You're looking at maybe $7,500, $8,000 next year.
So really, with the four, with the four cars trading in, that's really almost getting one, nine, three?
Yes, sir. If we get $40,000 trade-in, the first-year payment would be $46,000.
Trade-in is not pretty much pay-for-vehicle, or more than a vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Is this a limited offer?
No, man, it was there last year.
Oh, I see. So where will this put us if, say, we get these four plus the two that we got? That's in our plan?
I'd probably need to replace four more vehicles.
But
Four or six more vehicles.
Well, those four hold up that we would not have to do this next year? What's your, what's your plans on down the road?
Well, if we do this and we trade in four, then it would probably be, you know, unless it was an emergency situation, you know, at least the third year before I come back.
So
And at any point in time that we decide that we want to take and pay this off and turn around and re-enter to an agreement with another set of two or three or four, whatever, we can do that at any time once all.
So what does this mean on here if Donna who is awarded bid at this price of the honor? Do they not have the state bid yet?
Yes, they have.
What does that mean?
They had the state bid. When I asked them if they were going, what the prices of the sixteens were gonna be, they told me that that's pretty much what the price was gonna be for sixteens if they got the bid. At that time, it was like a week before the bid was let, so they weren't sure if they were gonna get it yet.
So they haven't?
They have security, yes, sir.
Now, when we talked about this last year, I thought the plan was this year that we would go with either one or two all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive. We wouldn't keep doing two-wheel drives just so we would have.
I could implement a, I mean, right now, I can tell him I want one all-wheel drive and three, two.
It's the difference in the, I mean, they're gonna be more expensive.
It would probably be about $2,200, I think.
Have you looked at the option of just buying one of these outright and then just leasing three? How much difference, how much money that's gonna save the city and still leasing all, all four for three years?
We know what one costs.
Yes, sir. One, one would cost
Decked out.
One would cost decked out probably about $40,000, $44,000 minus the trading, which brings back probably to the original price of $34,000.
How many miles on each car is it getting in?
I think one's got eight, one's got 75. Variations in there.
And what, did we get any more, any proposals from Ford or Dodge or anybody?
No, sir. They don't have a trade-in program.
Well, even if they did have one.
Is this on the state vehicle?
This is a, this is the, Donna who is on one of the state vehicles, or state vehicle that takes trade-ins. Plus, we have a local Chevrolet dealership here that would do maintenance work.
Around here, a lot of other municipalities not kind of going to this lease program. I know I read in paper where Winfield did it, but
Winfield has went with the Fords, but they didn't have trade-in options. Their, their package that they went with is gonna cost as much as our original package. For the Fords going into it. As far as the smaller cities, some of them are looking into it because they can't come up with the money at that particular time or in that lump sum. So they're, they're bidding on the, or banking on the monthly payment program. And if they get one, you know, and they lease it for 36 months, then the payment's hardly anything.
You know, we buy these vehicles, we're told we're gonna get rid of this, get rid of that. We still got the Crown Big sitting back here, police department. We bought some pickup, water department. We still running ones we replaced, so I, you know.
I think a bitch not moved since I've been here.
Well, I know. We sold it. We said we was gonna get rid of it.
And I asked tonight, did it be condemned, so that I can sell it?
Mike, you got to condemn it. I mean, it's got to be up for auction.
You got a vote to make it, what's the name of that term, Scott?
I need it.
I need it. Yeah.
And the pickup we bought was running, those Rangers are one of them. Got one over the wreck, we need to get rid of it. We start getting rid of our stuff like we was told we was gonna do, or it wasn't able to run. We're buying these stuff because we're told it's Not safe.
Excuse me, Tim. Why don't you have the word?
I've got two that I need to get rid of. Y'all need to deem them unneeded.
Well, that's, that's what we done, we bought you two new ones. Placing.
Thought that was a given. We got the phone down here. We'd like a motion to do that. And one over the wreck too. Can you do that in pinkage or?
Mike, you got anything we need to get rid of?
Why don't you keep the lease, we wanna do it next week? Anyway, we'll have to serve us or put all the deals or fox them off, whatever.
You know, I'm part of, I'm part of Victoria.
We'll probably do it in four years.
Maybe so. The problem with the Dodges is they are costing, and Ryan, you can kind of allude to that. They just haven't held up. And that's the truth, they just have not held up like we thought they would. Nothing wrong with getting all new cars, but the cars are out of warranty. And we have spent quite a bit of money. Tell us what tears up on the most of the time and what's, what's the expense? Because I know you've had to take the dealership quite a bit.
The front control arms on the steering has gone out. The bushings and everything gone out on all of them. That's had to be replaced on all of them. Every one of them now has had camchefs and lifters replaced on all of them. One of them has been replaced twice. We've got some of those special brake, disc brakes that they put on them, that are factory disc brakes, that have had to be replaced on some of them. The last one that we had camshaft replaced in it, we had to leave it at the dealership down there for a long that they were having to wait on intake manifold gaskets because they didn't have enough in stock that we were, they were having to catch up with the factory on manifold gaskets. There were replacements, so much on these vehicles.
This is just not our car handling concern. This Dodge is all over.
How many miles do you usually get for a vehicle under normal circumstances when the vehicle holds up?
The Crown Bigs, when I was with the Sheriff's Department, we'd get over 200,000 miles on them. And they still got, they still got two Crown Bigs on the street.
If you did this trade-in, how many chargers would you have left? How many Dodges would you have left?
Oh, I'd have four of that year model. I've got two, I think they're '08s, '09s, that haven't had hardly any trouble at all with them. My dog car, I want to think it's an '08. We rarely saw them have trouble out of it. But that particular model, this eleven that we bought, was the first run of that year, and that motor, refacitations and everything else. That was the first run year, nobody knew what the budget was gonna be.
How many miles on them '08s and '09s?
Well, over $100,000.
And you're still building?
Well, the white one he is now, '08, or the two black ones that I've got are just around $80,000 to $90,000.
How long is this deal? Is this deal still in? Two weeks before we meet again?
This trade-in, the break?
Yes. What I would like to know is, and I've just been sitting here figuring, the difference, what it's gonna save the city to buy one outright and just lease three for the three years? And I think there's gonna be enough difference that you're gonna be able to upgrade one of them to the all-wheel drive and still save the city money by paying for one and not leasing all of them. If these prices and what you've said are right. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Not correct.
Instead of leasing all four of them?
Right.
Buy one, pay for it, lease three. I think that that's gonna save enough money based on these numbers that you could upgrade, if the upgrade's just $2,200, to have one of them be an all-wheel drive. And it's still gonna be cheaper than leasing all four of them for three years. Now, I've been figuring this sitting here, so that may be wrong, but that's what I'm thinking.
Do we have an all?
Buying, buying one and leasing, you're still gonna have, you buy one outright and then you still lease three, you still have that payment on that lease for those three, plus buying one. We know that buying one is, well, unless the trade-in's 30, about $34,000.
Yes. Or with the trade-in. Well, with the trade-in, it's about $34,000.
And that's, that's
And then, like you said, you're gonna have the monthly payment of the lease anyway. I'm not sure as to what the configurations of the lease would be on the total.
Wouldn't the lease start three a month, as soon as we do?
Well, yeah, as soon as I call him and tell him that we're ready to do it.
Because we're, we're approximately six months in our budget, so we would actually have about buying one and then the lease for the remainder until October. So it'd be maybe six months lease on it, you know?
Another thing too is going with white, instead of custom ordering a color or something of that nature. The next run on whites will start somewhere the first of April. And he's already told me that if I, if I want these, then the number of whites that they're gonna have, what they call on-stop vehicles, he'll put my name on all of them in stock, so that I can get them out of that run. Otherwise, if I wanted gold or blue or whatever, then I'd have to specifically order that and I would have to wait my turn down the line, either June or July, or whenever they start that run, when my cars start to be built. But I'm gonna have to hot seat the time that I drive over, pick up the four vehicles, bring them back, give them my four vehicles. I'm gonna be four vehicles short at that time, so I'm gonna have to hot seat in the vehicles that I have with me until I start getting my Tahos loaded and back on the street.
Once they get here, once we get the vehicle here, I don't think any of them will get, um, back in to get them.
If I get the equipment.
What's the timeline at that? Once we get them?
What I would do is, if it's approved tomorrow, I would tell them that I want the Tahos. And then I'd turn around and call Fleet Safety and tell them that I want the equipment to deck all these out. Last year, the problem that I had with them is it was right at the last minute until we decided what type and what plan to go with. Then we ordered the vehicles, then I had to call Fleet Safety and tell them, okay, I need this package to go for them. So I could call Fleet Safety tomorrow, then start putting my order for equipment together. And it would be coming in here and it would be sitting in the shop, ready to go in these vehicles as the vehicles come in. It wouldn't take long at all, once it's here.
But you were gonna get them still at first, like, because this, your order coming in with the four white vehicles?
It would probably be made.
Oh, okay.
But we'll still
Before they'd be on the streets, maybe?
Yeah, before we'd get them to be able to get them on the street. But in the meantime, I'd still be able to drive my four until I drive to Donna who and pick up those four.
I understand.
I'd have my four in service.
But can you not use any of the equipment out of these?
Yes, that's all we're deducting.
Donna who's gonna put these in there? The city gonna do it?
Brother Wigan is an installer for Ford.
He's an installer for Fleet Safety, that certified installer.
Who pays him?
Well, we, Fleet.
We pay, we pay Fleet?
We pay, we would, basically, we would pay him, but he either, because he's Fleet certified installer, then Fleet furnishes him the equipment, and then we'd pay him.
Can we do this, Scott?
Yes, we've checked it.
Do we have to bid this $26,400 worth of equipment? Or is this the only place to get this equipment?
That's, that's, that is a total price of four units.
Right.
So that price is broken down into fours. It's just put together for the purposes, or it could be broken down as one.
What is that bid? Is that state bid?
Yes.
Tammy, I won't figure. Maybe we wait two weeks, surely. That'd be going on one.
Is that what you're deducting?
Yeah, I think we could save him, save some money. It's our duty to look at.
I think it's our duty. I'm not sure that it's gonna save, we can, we can, we'll be able to take on one of these vehicles. We know what we had in our budget to do it, so.
And I'm saying $2,200 increase, that's, I think that's what it was last year. I haven't checked this year to see what it all would be. It's gonna be around $2,300. I mean, thank you.
Did you send last year winning?
We did.
So
I'm also checking on 1033 program also to get some alternative altering vehicles.
What kind of program?
1033 program for military surplus. So I'm right now looking, we've just been accepted to be able to, Alabama's been approved to look into this 1033 program before we can possibly get us a couple of hunters for no charge whatsoever, we attack the main town.
So we could get those, that would be okay?
And wouldn't that work out any of the way?
Any other thoughts, please?
You know, maybe, maybe, I don't wanna come back in two weeks and be talking the same shit that I'm talking tonight.
That's how we do it every day, but hey, it's been figured at one time, down the other, so. But this
I don't think it's
Yeah, I think it is.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, I think it is. Same. And put ten to paper a month here. Whatever you want me to do.
Let's go down, we'll come back in a minute. Number three is a proposal to repair the basement direct center. We had only one turn in the estuary, we had two, three to ask about it, but only one turned in. We get vandalism and vandalism down there. And the total cost of replacement, getting it back from the owner, is $7,205. And that is about on Mr. Brock Holman. So we would like a motion to get this approved so we can get the damage repaired.
I'd like a motion to get that approved. This price.
Is there a second?
Oh, sure, I can. And I hope we start keeping a better eye on fines.
We will. Any other discussion on this? I'm in favor, CIA. Any votes?
Claire, I have to stay on this.
Okay. Number four is a proposal from Strata States to stop security cameras at the recreation center. This is something we've been needing for quite some time. We do have them here in City Hall. And we've been needing them at direct for quite a while. Probably a couple of months ago, I had a proposal from Avenue West. And we went back and re-moved some around. We had several in our gym, some different places. But what we did is go back and, and we've got some pavilion, some down below the basement, in the hallway, bathrooms, and one facing the outside court, basketball court. So total of 10? 12? Okay. 10 cameras. And total for this is $10,557. I did talk to Larry about this today, he's 100% for it. And I think it's something that's necessary. We have a lot of, it's hard to watch every single thing that happens there. There's been several times we've had stuff happen at the pavilion over the years. And in the basement recently, with some vandalism. And I think this, this will at least help. May not prevent everything, but will help some evidence when something like this happens. And it'd be my suggestion that we do this and take it out of the wreck. And we can pay for it.
How long can you go back to look?
Those things, about 30 days, I think. Things kind of starts over.
Where are these things?
Here's one. I've got, in my office, I've got a colored drawing, one he's got. I don't know if there's pink, things, orange, red, or something there. I'll have to show you those. It's got colored ins, it's a lot easier to see than that copy right there. I think there you go, man. And they can be moved. I mean, this is just a drawing and they can be kept on here, just like they were there.
And Andy's been over there, hasn't he?
Oh, several times.
And, and, yeah, well, I'm making a motion.
He went over it.
It's something we guess, we say it's already been under, maybe?
Yes, this is the, yes, this is the, will be underneath the, we're going back toward the sisters. And as far as the placement of them, it's not that critical. When he starts putting them up, we can make sure they're in where they need to be. Did you make a motion, President?
I did.
Is there a second?
All second. It's coming out of the red?
Yes, that's what I said. Tim, is there a second, or any other discussion? I'm in favor, CIA. Thank you very much. Heath? Sorry, I need to wait a little bit. You got a long way to go. What we have here, I think you've got a copy of it, is we've already got everything approved. This is really formal, and Heath, you can just tell them about the bid process. We had it over there, who got the bid and what's our next step to get this Key Branch housing authority water?
Okay. Teague received a grant from ARC about six, eight months ago for some water. Key Branch housing authority. We took bids last week on that project. Had five bids submitted, the low bid was from Centerline Contracting with an amount of $241,997.23. Our original construction budget was around $250,000. So we're, plus I, 250, we're about $8,000, $8,000, $9,000 under budget. That money will be set aside as contingency. If anything happens to our construction we need it. If we don't use it, it'll revert back to ARC to do the project.
Do they have the 10? Are they under 10 by?
Yes, so there's 120 days to complete the project, once they're under contract.
And Heath, while we're here, just tell us what we're doing there, you and Rodney. We're replacing the water lines.
Right now
The one in West is water, so, and some paving, isn't it?
That's correct. This is just one of, right now, there's a combination of some old galvan That's correct, this is just one, uh, right now, there's a combination of some old galvanized, two-inch galvanized lines, they're behind the units. A lot of them in the same area that the sewer lines are at, so if you have a sewer leak, you have sewer leaking in the water meters. Not a good situation, meter readers have to have to go behind the system to read all the meters, there's eighty-four units in Key Branch. So this will lay a new six-inch PVC line out in front of the units, and install all the new meters on the sidewalk, adjacent to the sidewalk. Make it a lot easier to maintain and repair and read the meters.
Are these the original, did you say that, there are the original lines put in there?
Probably, yeah.
And Rodney, this will make it much easier for our guys on the, going on straight line reading meters, instead of going behind each of them, each individual part.
Mayor will be placed, like Heath said, next, adjacent to the sidewalk, and they will be placed in a concrete vault, where we can just go by, lift the lid up, and read about five meters at one time, close the lid, walk to the next, raise the lid, read five more, just. The labor process is a whole lot easier, where they're having to go, like he said, behind the apartments now to read the meters.
Is water pressure a problem, water there a problem, in that area?
Yeah, we've had several issues over there, low pressure, and a lot of departments don't have a lot of pressure, we can't, they'll, they'll line, they're just corroded.
Nick lost the grant, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Y'all did a pretty good job of estimating this for it to come, right? Because several of them, some of them come over, but the low bidder ends up, well, by contract, hasn't actually come about what you thought it was, that's good.
What'd you say, I'm a pro?
They're up to no fault.
So what you're asking, Rodney, is for the water contract to, Center Line contract?
That's correct.
Do we have a motion to award this bid to the low bidder?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any other discussion? Hall and Fair, CIA?
Uh-huh.
Anything else, any other update?
Uh, we are proceeding on design on the Weston housing authority, City V D grant, which is water sewer at baby, hope to have that out, uh, late spring, we're ready to bid that project.
While you're here, will you give us an update on the reason, uh, North Fork or the Grandview?
Grandview Drive.
I asked you about last week, I had a chance to tell the council, what's, who we're hoping would be in the fall, now it's, we thought maybe February, now it might be.
Yeah, we're going through the process without doubt, um, you know what else to say to that, it's a long process. We've submitted plans to them, they review them, we've made some, some changes, sent plans back to them. They've now been sent to Montgomery. Once that's approved, then we have to go through, uh, a right-of-way acquisition process, there's some right-of-way, we have to acquire some private landowners. Uh, hopefully that won't take very long, but it could take a couple of months, so. There's steps that you have to go through, until you have plans approved, you can't start acquiring right-of-way.
So we just been delayed again, without that, and all the, I mean, it's going to happen, it's not going to approve, it's in the state budget.
There's no guarantee of the funds being received, you're just going through their process.
Just take the long one, though. Thank you, thank you, Heath. Uh, number six is a renewal and a contract with NACOB, ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, and you have a copy of the letter I got from Keith Jones. This is something that we read each year for their budget, and they're, has to be done before February twenty-eighth, so ready appropriations, dues, transfer requests, inherited agency on the agent. Uh, about NACOB, we've been, we've been really, really long, they've done a fantastic job for us. They depend on this, it's part of, part of their fund, and we get back much, much more than what we pay them in grants and stuff they do for us, so. Uh, really, really appreciate NACOB and what they do for us. Uh, and this is something we do each year. Is there to be a motion to approve this annual contract? Okay, is there a second?
All second.
Any other discussion? Hall and Fair, CIA?
Uh-huh.
Very much. Uh, number seven is, uh, what we do also each year for, uh, Arbor Day, Arbor Week, it's just an annual proclamation to carry, declare in the week of February twenty-first through February twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, is Arbor Week in the City of Hamilton. And all citizens are encouraged to participate in tree planting activities during this week, and, uh, there will be free trees to be given away on Thursday, February twenty-fifth. There'll be, uh, next Thursday from nine until eleven at the Hamilton Recreation Center, and I really appreciate the, uh, Beautification Board for doing this, thank Francis, and some of your co-members are going to be giving those trees away for us with, uh, Mr. Avery. So, uh, would there be a motion to approve this proclamation?
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
One second, Larry.
Thank you, Tim. Hall and Fair, CIA?
Uh-huh.
Number eight is, uh, also one to come in like this afternoon from Amanda Winsef, she is with the National Girl Scouts, and they're proclaiming this week, also the week of February twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, it's National Girl Scout Cookie Week, and be probably going around selling cookies, so y'all be prepared for that, buy some cookies and have them. This is sort of the same thing, they would be, if you waited till the first week in March, would be too late, but, uh, this would be, uh, having those Girl Scouts, and they're going to come and get some pictures made, I think. So also be, uh, motion to approve this proclamation.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Tim, thank you. Any discussion? Hall and Fair, CIA?
Uh.
On the vehicles, we go back to the vehicles. I'm very flexible either way, I'm, I'm fine with it. If some of y'all are not fine with it, then two weeks won't kill us, but, uh, Rodney, what do you think, I mean, I'm, I don't want to come back in March seventh and just go through this again and not do it, because I think we should do it. I think we built it in our budget, we know we need it, and we're prepared for it, keep down, keep doing dealers, and all the information is, I'm perfectly good either way, I want y'all to be comfortable with it. Prefer to go with it. Sir?
Prefer to go with it. I feel like I can shiver up the all terrain vehicles with the ten thirty-three program.
You think there's a good chance of getting those?
Well, Alabama has just released this, been the last three weeks. Um, Ewan has gotten one, I think, Winfield is looking at one in Montgomery, and one in Full Campbell. We're just waiting on, we should be getting our password by any day now.
I saw a news while back, that they come over to East Alabama, some sheriff department picked up some.
Well, they did, uh, they came back and got some of the tactical equipment that some, they didn't feel that some of it needed. Uh, they were picking up the, uh, like, the personal, uh, tanks, stuff of that nature, they were bringing all that back in, and then everybody was having to account for everything that they had. But as far as two homers, they're no, they're not an issue to get.
So it would be three years before, uh, you made the proposal for this again, or whatever kind of proposal, well.
Unless we decide to pay it off earlier.
Ever since Wade has, uh, sent this out, uh, I've reviewed it over and over, and I just felt like we need to move ahead, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve it, and, uh, you all will go along with the time, if you don't, we'll take care of it, so.
Okay.
On the three-year lease, like you had, uh, you all had talked about preferring to do.
Right, I think there's three, four, and five-year options.
And if this equipment deal were to come in power, uh, you will come back and help us stuff it?
Just the equipment price that I got from Fleet Safety, is the equipment, the price of the equipment to equip Ford vehicles. That's the, that's the proposal that they gave me on what, basically what I've equipped. Yeah, I've got radios and everything else, that have gone some lights, that will come out these chargers, or just reach over into the tile hogs, it'll be interchangeable. There's more consoles and screens and stuff like that, they're not interchangeable, so that's where the purchase has to come from on those.
What goes left with, um, coming out of the dodges that will fit the tile hogs?
We can put it on the vehicles. Basically, what we had left was, uh, screens, the consoles, the pushovers.
So those don't trade in with the vehicle?
They don't with the vehicle, we're talking just stripped.
So you're getting eleven thousand from the vehicle, pretty much stripped, except for water in the car?
Ten thousand.
We gave it back-
Oh, ten thousand, sorry, ten thousand.
Last year, we got eleven thousand dollars for-
Pretty much, without the equipment.
Without the-
So we have to remove that, and then what does it go in the other, can be settled.
We'll sell them to other cities or counties or something, Scott, can't, without even bidding them, can't, if you can find somebody to sell to.
Okay, I think we've had quite a bit of discussion, and we've got a motion, is there going to be a second?
So we ain't buying no all-wheel drive in these tile hogs? Like you said, it was going to, this time, next time we bought anything?
I was going by, that him saying that there was a good chance we could get those from the market.
That program wasn't-
That was a done deal.
That program wasn't open to us at that particular time.
When would you know about that, would you know about that before?
Now, we got notification in January that it's open, and we just haven't waited, or passed a rule to apply for it yet.
Or would you rather have one all-wheel drive and three of the Redder? If you had your choice? Could you find out what one more, what change in one to all-wheel drive would be?
I can.
You have one new all-wheel drive that shouldn't have to worry about replacing any time soon.
Might be a time for what we need.
Okay. I can do that.
What about disposal of the Crown B?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get Mike, and, uh, Tim, and Rodney, and Larry, and you, we'll get a list of those vehicles, that's not one we need. And then, uh, we'll do that next week, that we can, we can vote on it all as a deal, instead of just picking out Crown B tonight, and another one two, three weeks from now.
So we're going to let the motion die, and vote on it next time?
We can.
After we get the first?
We can.
For the all-wheel drive?
But we will be voting on it next time, up down, one way or another.
How much did you say, uh, how much mowber did you say that it would pay?
I'm thinking approximately two, three thousand dollars in mowber.
Okay. That's what we'll do, be prepared for, vote next time for sure. Uh, number nine has got a discussion of a water project, not nothing in particular. One particular resident, Rodney, can you kind of explain what's our process, and what it has been, since, I know that you checked back, since, uh, Mayor Logan was mayor? How do we do water projects, or extending water, or how, what does the resident pay for, and what do we pay for, and how do we do that?
There was a procedure put in place back under the State Logan administration, where if we had to extend a water line inside or outside the city limit, the, the customer always paid to have that extension done, and then we would maintain the line from that, once it's installed, we would maintain it from then on, up to the, up to the customer's meter.
And the customers always pay for having a meter set, and then from meter to their house? And how much is a meter set in house, about three fifty?
Meter that's set's actually five hundred dollars, and then the deposit's one twenty-five, so.
So brand new meter is five hundred, deposit's one twenty-five, okay.
And that's on top of, you know, if we do extend the water line.
Is there a certain distance, uh, from where the city stops, to how far you can go? I mean, I guess, well, if that's the case, it would be whatever the owner, the homeowner would want to pay with it, okay.
What determines how far outside the city limits you go?
No, we're, we, we don't go a lot outside the city limits.
So, I mean, does flow determine it, or is there-
Flow determines it, the pressure, and everything.
Okay, so how does somebody go about getting that checked, because I've had somebody ask me that was outside the city limits, that was interested?
Interested in getting water.
Yes, so how did, how, do they just need to contact you, and you do a flood test?
They need to contact me, and they'll go for the letter.
So as long as there's pressure?
You have volume and pressure.
Volume and pressure, regardless of how far out the city limits?
Hey, you talking outside the city limits?
You said inside, outside?
Yeah. Well, yeah, well, and that, that all depends on too, where the county goes, I mean, there's county outside the city limits in a lot of areas.
So if the county's there, the city won't go?
Right.
I think we just need to take care of what's inside the city.
And that's not only what we do.
Let the county worry about it.
Was this, excuse me, was this voted on back when Steve was in, did you serve, did y'all serve a lot?
I did. Tim and I both did, but I don't remember.
Oh, I remember years ago, I know several people bought it when it was outside the city limits, that back in, the city limits didn't go too far, but I've never known people do it in, in the city, inside the city. I think the city ordered service, people water feeding inside the city limits, or picking up their trash.
Is there any specifics in the routing on that, Rodney, I mean, have you looked it up in the minutes, or?
I haven't, I have not yet.
Well, I'd like to know what it says.
I would do.
Okay, if, I mean, you're going to-
I mean, you're going to watch, you were told about your process.
I was told about previous.
That's right.
Okay, I mean, he served what, four years, so it's going to be sometime then that, you don't have, ideally, either one of you, time, time?
It's been, uh, ninety-eight to two thousand two, somewhere in there.
Well, there's some, I'm pretty sure, if you can find that one, it's on there.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I guess it might, why, why, what's the reasonable policy?
Sometimes you have residents that wants water to their house, and then, they could be in the city limits, probably are, and then the, the water doesn't go near their house. And you, in the past, maybe the city has extended those water lines so they can get on, but there has been times also where that resident pays to have that water extended, and then we take over the water line from that point forward, and that, you know, that may have been a policy that's been here for a while, I think, has some of its research.
But there's been some, there's been some requests recently, or that's-
Yes.
-brought the issue, or whatever, okay.
You know, and it could cost them a thousand, or it could cost five thousand. To get water extended from one here to there, and you may not take in but one house. And you may not take in but two houses. And I'm not sure how that's been done, I know what I've been told, and I know what Rodney's done since, since we've been here. We've probably had too many issues in the last three years, have we, Rodney?
No, no.
This doesn't come up all the time.
No, we have had some to pay to have a water line extended.
I don't know, I'll take back to fifties, sixties, had it done.
Yeah.
Because it's outside city limits, but most time in the city, we furnish city water.
Why would you then, see if we can, we'll just start it? Okay. I don't have any other thing at this time, uh, it's all right, we get a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, since one might hear.
Okay. Give him a second, give him one second.
I'll second.
He'll get a second. Hall and Fair, CIA?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.